All to order, the Marshall City Council meeting for August 18th, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Wolferzberger.
Here.
Member Cheney Huggett. Member Gates.
Here.
Member Hackworth.
Here.
Member Skibby.
Here.
Member Traver.
Here.
And Member Underhill.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I would seek a motion to excuse Member Cheney Huggett from this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Don't see. I would ask council to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to approval agenda. Item six, we have public comment on agenda items. Item seven is our consent agenda with city council minutes for the work session and regular session on August 4th. We have city bills, special event request from Choose Marshall Christmas Tree Lighting, special event request for the costume parade and a set public hearing for the CDBG grant for 125, 127 West Michigan Ave Rental Rehab. We have no presentations, no informational items, no public hearings, no business. Reports recommendations. Item 12A, water and sewer capacity fees. 12B is a vehicle purchase for Public Works. 12C is vehicle purchase for parks maintenance. 12D is a CDBG application for housing repair grant program, set up public hearing. And 12E is sale of real property. Point zero six acres at 100 Page Street. No appointments or elections tonight. 14th public comment on non-agenda items, 15 council and manager communications. Followed by adjournment. I would seek a motion regarding the agenda.
Move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. A motion, motion to support. It's a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Brings us to public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items should be addressed during the public hearing portion, item 10 of the meeting agenda. Non-agenda items shall be addressed during the public comment, non-agenda items, item 14, portion of the meeting agenda. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on agenda items? Mr. Adams.
I won't let it pass by. All right, Barry Wayne Adams, 6.2 West Green Street. Again, my continuing objection to your failure to include the substance of the public comments in your minutes. And it's just a continuing reflection that what we say doesn't matter, but nevertheless, we're coming down here for the pointless and futile exercise of putting stuff on the record. And considering what was discussed right at the end of the last meeting, there are still several numerous problems with this effort trying to prevent cross-contamination, which is particularly curious, given the fact that we've had cross-contamination of the aquifers over at the Verona well drilling field in the hasty rush to provide more water for the mega mess. And what is the existing quality of our water? When I've noticed that if you pour some water out and have it stand more than 20 minutes, it turns kind of a pinkish-orange tinge. I wonder what chemical formulation is doing that and what it's trying to cover up. But with this effort to try to see if we have potential sources of cross-contamination, I find it interesting, I went to the website and looked up the information on the water meters that have been installed by the city. And they are data-driven. They can hold 120 hours worth of data, and one of the data points is their ability to detect reverse flow. So you should already have a database of potential sources that at particular times would have created a negative pressure situation on the public side of the, of the water system. And those water meters would have dutifully recorded any sort of backflow that could have occurred. So there's also the issues of, you know, just because the city made a contract with somebody, it doesn't mean I made a contract with somebody. And the city does not have the power of attorney over me and does not have any power to make contracts on my behalf. So if anyone wants to come into my house, they have to have a contract.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Sabringford, O'New Township, in context to your cross-contamination of the water. Why won't you all let anyone see the contractor agreement? Meaning people will not have full disclosure of what they are signing. If they don't sign what they don't understand, you will shut off their water? That sounds illegal. Um, anyways, their water, and that sounds illegal, maybe you will slip something in that agreement or contract so that they won't sue you because they're dying. Because I saw you buy all the water rights for the Blue Oval last year, connected to the CCP, and mind you, I witnessed it all. We warned you not to buy those. The water now has the toxin TTHM, that's TTHM? Google it. It will kill you slowly. Due to fast drilling for the mega site in the CCP, you guys hit a old chemical plant's aquifer and put it right into the system. Good job. I see you had News 8 do damage control. It's not crumbling infrastructure, we know the truth. Anyways, what you're doing is unfair and not right, and people should be able to see this contract. I don't care that it is on a little iPad. You should be able to pull the whole thing. Let them see what they're signing, and I think legally, they have a right to know what they're signing. You can't just give them a half little piece of the contract and say, oh, no, you have to sign it. That's illegal. And another thing, we kind of know that when you shut off their water, you're going to try to condemn their homes if they hold their ground, you know, a whole bunch of them are lawyering up. I volunteered to bring in water from the country. And I'm sure there's plenty of other farmers that will, because there's a shit ton of farmers at my meeting right now. I'm missing to stand here and waste my life talking to you about the same things I've warned you about over and over again, enabling a foreign enemy. Now you got toxins in the water already, and that plant hasn't even begun. You're going to shoot 750,000 gallons of lithium-infused water per day when that bugger gets going. I'm just saying, you guys bought the rights for a dollar. When the deaths start, because they're already getting poisoned, they need to have somebody to pay for their funeral. And these people need to be able to see what's on this agreement or contract for real, legally, and signing an NDA as being a public servant is illegal!
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move to our consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening is, again, 7A is city council minutes from our work session and our regular session on August 4th. 7B is city bills, purchased on August 1st, 2025, $29,829.71. 7B, sorry, purchases on August 5th, 2025 of $924,697.15. Purchases on August 8th of 2025, $169,001.42. And then our July purchase of $1,136,924.73 for a total of $2,260,453.11. We then have the special event request for the Choose Marshall Christmas Tree Lighting, the special event request for the Costume Parade, and the 7E is the CDBG grant for 125, 127 West Michigan Ave Rental Rehab. It's a set up public hearing. I'd seek a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second that.
Motion support, and sir, roll call vote, please.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Mayor Wolferzberger.
Yes.
And Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item 12A, Water and Sewer Capacity Fees, and Director Devonport will address us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight I bring to you a resolution to adopt new water and sewer capacity fees. We had a work session on this topic last council meeting. But as we view, you'll recall that they are, water sewer capacity fees are a one-time fee charged to developers for connecting to the city's water and/or sewer system. We've completed a third-party rate study with a consultant to understand what the fees need to be based on our current asset registry and future capital expansion projects. And the resolution included in your packet outlines the fees that we're proposing. So for one REU, which is a 5/8 or 3/4 inch meter, we will charge $960 for water and $1,840 for sewer. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I just want to make sure we're clear for the benefit of the public that we're talking about a fee that's charged during the initial activation of service, correct?
That's correct. It's a one-time fee charged for tying into the city system. So it is a reimbursement to the fund, the utility, if you will, for getting the system to that point. And it's that, that users of the utility, their, their portion of that expansion for work, for the system.
So it's paid for by developers, by somebody building a new house, or somebody renovating, doing extensive renovation probably to a business or existing house, but not to anyone who just has service normally?
It's not a fee for any current user, ratepayer, correct? Paid for by developer, commercial, industrial, residential, across the board. Equalized out based on meter size, so a larger user is going to pay a larger fee, a smaller user is going to pay a smaller fee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Then I would seek a motion regarding item 12A. I move we approve resolution, Resolution 2025-21, a resolution to update water and sewer capacity fees and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Support.
Motion support. Sir, roll call vote, please.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Mayor Wolferzberger.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
And Member Skibby.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item 12B, Vehicle Purchase for Public Works, and Director Devonport joins us again.
Thank you. I believe this is the first purchase of this fiscal year through motor pool. And so tonight we have, well, for the year, we have several units budgeted, but tonight we're looking to get approval on one unit replacement of a 2007 Ford F-150 half-ton pickup. The, the unit is currently, is primarily used by our DPW mowing staff, so it's a full-time position in the mowing season. And the unit has been red-tagged, so it's been taken out of service because the shifting gear has failed and it's unsafe to operate. So we're proposing to replace it with a replacement F-150 pickup, 2025, in the amount of $4,000, $46,895. We are using the State's My Deal Program through the awarded dealer for that program to purchase the unit. I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, I will seek a motion regarding 12B.
I move that we approve the purchase of a 2025 F-150 pickup truck in the amount of $46,895, utilized in the state of Michigan. My Deal Program authorized the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
It's the amount that's in.
Is that the correct amount? Marguerite, can you confirm what the number should be? Please? Okay, I was skipping ahead too far, thank you.
Mr. Adams. Have a motion, do I have support?
Yeah, support.
Motion to support, and sir, roll call vote, please.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Mayor Wolferzberger.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
And Member Traver.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item 12C, Vehicle Purchase for the Parks and Parks Maintenance. Director Strange.
Good evening. We have another truck purchase that we are proposing this evening. We're happy to say that as part of the, our goal to provide better parks maintenance, that was identified in the five-year Parks and Rec Master Plan. A new parks maintenance supervisor employee is funded in the fiscal year 26 operational budget. And this position has become, has been a priority for the city council over the last few budget cycles. And we are very happy to say that we have found the necessary funds, the general funds, in order to be able to fund this position. This is a maintenance employee, and a new truck is needed in order to support the person in this position to function effectively. And we don't have other suitable vehicles available in the current motor pool fleet. The proposed truck is a 2026 Ford F-450 four-by-four truck. Has a stainless steel dump, dump box, tarp, 2000 power, 2K power generator, and snowplow. The unit accessories will enable the parks maintenance supervisor to haul materials like mulch, weeds, and dirt, as well as equipment and power tools. Additionally, the unit is being purchased with a snowplow to support snow and ice removal efforts in the DDA and the park properties during the winter. As equipped, the cost of the 2026 Ford F-450 four-by-four truck is $98,790. Similar to the other city vehicle purchase of this type, we would purchase the truck under the State of Michigan My Deal Program, just like the other truck that you just heard about.
Do all the accessories come from My Deal as well?
Everything is one package, yep.
Any questions, comments, or discussion?
You said 2026, is it 26 or 25?
I believe it's 26.
I would just comment that it's been a goal for a while for us to have more robust parks maintenance, so I'm very happy to hear that we have that position filled and that we're going to have a great vehicle for that person to use when they're doing their job, and we look forward to our beautiful parks looking even more beautiful going forward, so thank you.
We, we are actually wrapping up interviews on Friday.
I got ahead of myself, sorry.
But the truck, but the truck is also, has a pretty significant lead time, so we're trying to make sure that we get this ordered when we can here, so that when we do, we're going to have somebody on staff pretty soon.
Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Then I would seek a motion regarding 12C.
I move that we approve the purchase of a 2026 F-450 four-by-four truck with dump bed and plow in the amount of $98,790, utilized in the state of Michigan My Deal Program, and authorize city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Support.
I have a motion and support, sir, roll call vote, please.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
And Mayor Wolferzberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to 12D, CDBG. For those that aren't familiar, this is Community Development Block Grant, application for housing repair grant program, set public hearing. Director Strange is presenting again.
Hello, I'm actually very excited to tell you about this opportunity that we have. This has been something that I've been working with Mishda for a little stretch of time here. We found out about this opportunity earlier this year. There is a grant opportunity that we are working with them to develop to give our residents who own homes in the city the opportunity to get 20,000, up to $20,000 towards certain repairs of their house. So it is a, you must own your home, you know, there's a lot of parameters associated with this. We are kind of limiting that scope because then we can kind of manage those projects a little bit easier. So there's a kind of a shortlist of proposed type, program, project types that we would be targeting. But we're pretty excited to be able to have, to have the opportunity to go after this grant funding. We would be, we're seeking $250,000 for our community, and we're hoping somewhere in the, the number of 10, 11 projects that we'd be able to help fund. The, there are income limits associated for the applicants, and so I did put that into the report. It is targeting medium to low-income housing, or people who own their houses that have medium to low income. And we are excited to be able to submit this application. We think it's a great benefit for the community if we can go after this.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion? What, I guess what other criteria would you use if, you know, you get 45 applications come in? How do you decide what has the priorities by project, is it by need? What does that decision look like?
So initially, it would be first application in, you know, that would be number one, right? And then it would be based on, you know, we'd have to kind of look at each of those applications and see if they meet all the criteria. If they meet the criteria, they're on the list, right? So I'm hoping it's that simple, right? I'm hoping that there, you know, as long as they meet the criteria of and being qualified to get the funds, and then meet our project criteria as far as what the scope of their project they want to do, there would be checkpoints along the way to confirm that they're still within those parameters. So there is some administration that we pick up as part of the grant opportunity, but they do allow for funding for the administrative work associated with it.
Then is there any, I guess, I can't see it right now, do they have to say who they're going to use? And is there any way to try to encourage or ensure that they use, you know, local or Marshall-based business, a roofer, or whoever to kind of keep that money as local as possible?
As much as we can, so the 20,000, one of the reasons we're trying to keep it at, at or below the $20,000 threshold is we anticipate there will be some older houses here in Marshall that may have lead-based paint or other lead, you know, that limit or limit the scope that would be allowed, or exacerbate the amount of scope that would be required because abatement would be required and it just kind of snowball. That doesn't mean they would get more money, right? So what we want to do is first, limit that scope. Second, by limiting that scope, we can hopefully provide them with a list. I'm coordinating with some people in Battle Creek who are a little more familiar with these kind of grants, and they've developed some lists of contractors who are certified in the certain level of lead abatement that would be required as a part of these projects. I don't have that list yet, but I would be providing some of those resources so that these people can go ahead and reach out to whomever they select, right? We can't limit who they would choose to work with, but we could, we could help them with some reference information and resources.
I think that sounds fantastic, I'm just wondering, do we know how competitive these grants are, or what the likelihood is of us receiving it?
So we already, we submitted our letter of intent, and I think I submitted in the package a letter that we received back after submitting that. I've been in communication with Mishda several times, mostly because we haven't, as Marshall, done this type of a grant program before, and so I'm trying really hard to set it up how they want us to set it up, or at least be, you know, within their parameters. And it seems, it seems like if you follow the process and hit their deadlines, they have kind of already allocated those funds towards the people that they have said that, you know, they're moving on to the next step. So I'm hopeful, as long as we maintain the course and do what they're asking of us, that we would be kind of locked in. I, yeah, that's what I'm hoping. But there's no, it doesn't seem like there's anything that would put us at risk of not getting those funds unless there was, you know, something in the process later down the road that, you know, we would end up administering this somehow differently than was anticipated. So that's, I feel, is where the risk is. Like, they might allocate the funds to us, but we don't really get those funds until these projects are already started. So we really need to be really cognizant of following their prescribed requirements through the course of all these projects.
What's our timeframe to use the funds, like, just for offhand reading the agreement, the actual application? You need, basically it's 50% work funding through this of the overall project, up to $20,000? Am I reading that right or not?
Can you, I'm sorry.
So is it the project, it looks like the project has to be basically $40,000, the project will give up to 20,000?
Yep.
It's a huge project for someone.
It could be, so there, there may be projects that, that would not get the full $20,000, right? We would anticipate, we, if you're going to do a $15,000 project, you might get $7,500, or, you know, whatever that. And depending, we don't know what kind of projects we're going to be getting, right? I mean, if you're just doing a simple repair to some front steps on your, you know, on your porch, that's a very small amount, but if you can pay for half of it, right? It seems like that's a pretty big benefit. Whereas, you know, there might be some front porches on some of these old houses where you could rip off the whole front porch and get a lot of that done, you know, for $40,000. So there's a range, right, of So there's a range, right, of stuff that could have a pretty big impact, I think, on and people who are wanting to maintain their, maintain their buildings. Um, and you asked about the timeline for, and that's what I was looking really quickly. Um, cause I had it, had it in the packet. I think it is um twenty twenty-seven. It might have, might have ended up taking it out of the, the administrative report. But I know that it's in twenty twenty-seven that we have to have the projects completed, and those funds would get expended. I'm not sure of the month. That's what I was looking for.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Just one more question. A- anything um in terms of like the, the, the preservation need of the project taken into consideration? Because I mean, obviously, we love it to these funds to go toward the houses that are most in need of it. You could imagine somebody with like sort of old siding just being like, I'd like to get it done. And there's maybe a house next to them that's like, you know, falling down that would really need it more. So is there a way to?
So, so um, these are federal funds which do require um if there is exterior work, it'll have to go through the state historic preservation office. Um, that's something that I'm trying to lay out even in the initial application so that it's pretty clear that to people that there would be some oversight on that regard. We've also talked internally that if, you know, if there is a house that um, you know, needs some help, right, you know, we might be able to present this as an opportunity for them. Again, you know, we have to look at that timeline, um, you know, and you have to be kind of sensitive, you know, about telling people they need to, you know, fix their house up, but, but it is an opportunity, right? Um, and I think it's a pretty good opportunity that we, we don't generally have. So this, what we're asking is really to set the public hearing and um that we could take the next step of submitting our draft application so that that can be reviewed by Mishda and again, provide us some more feedback to, towards the next steps in this process.
If I can share, um, I've seen these grants used extensively uh over in the Jackson area um and in the, I believe in Battle Creek as well uh for decades. And they've done some uh great things for existing neighborhoods that, um, again, you know, maybe they just uh maybe they didn't have the means to, to tackle something big, but if you can, you know, cut it down in half, it's, it makes a big difference. So very excited to see these come, uh, these, these dollars coming into our community. Thank you. No further discussion, questions, or comments. I'll seek a vote, or excuse me, I'll seek a motion on item twelve D.
I move that we set a public hearing for the CDBG application for the Housing Repair Grant Program for Sep- the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting uh at seven, the regular meeting at seven P M.
Support.
Motion support. This is a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That moves us to item twelve E, uh, sale of real property, uh, zero point zero six acres at one hundred Page Street. City Manager Perry will present this.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, it's not a misprint. That is a tiny, tiny triangle that uh back in two thousand fourteen, the city of Marshall actually sold this property to a dark horse brewery, which now is Roke. Um, and they recently sold this to a new developer, uh, his building Better Spaces LLC, which you may recall, they received a brownfield to build some storage units on the property, uh, known as Hundred Page Street. Um, well, the Mr. Loveland was performing his due diligence, title search, title insurance and surveying. They noticed that there was a discrepancy from the previous sale that occurred. So in order for him to move forward, you know, close with the banks, he really needs the city of Marshall to release that. So uh what I'm presenting tonight is basically the opportunity to release that to him for a dollar. Attorney Revore has prepared the uh, the resolution and the quitclaim deed to effectuate that. So that's what we're asking tonight.
Yes, just to be clear, this is the green triangle on our diagram?
This is in your packet on the very last page. Yes, it's that little green kinda with a little sliver of yellow too is all that, yeah.
It's, it's landlocked, it's in the middle of the lot.
It serves as zero purpose, exactly.
Uh, any questions, comments, or discussion? Saying none, I would seek a motion on item twelve E.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution to convey property and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents. Support.
Motion support. It's a roll call vote, please.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Skibby.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer's Burger. And Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves us to item fourteen, uh, public comment on non-agenda items. Persons addressing City Council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Anyone wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Beg, five oh four West Green Street. First, I would like to publicly thank two people. First, Bert Steinman of Eagle. Bert and I had two very friendly and productive conversations about the cross-contamination control project. Uh, additionally, Bert sent me some materials that included the cross-contamination project manual. This is the manual that set out to local communities to help them develop their uh own project and to have it consistent with what the state requests. Uh, I imagine most of you have not seen it. It's over two hundred and seventy pages long. It's a big read. Secondly, I want to thank Aaron Amsler, uh Superintendent of Water for the City of Marshall. Similarly, I had two wonderful conversations with Aaron about the cross-contamination project. In the past two weeks, I've gained a wealth of information about the CCP ordinance and the laws pertaining to it. I have more information I could possibly share in the fifty-nine seconds I have left. I may not get through this. This is what I will say this evening. The very good exchange that I had with public officials uh was not met with a similar style with HydroCorp. I felt like HydroCorp was stonewalling me, and I suggested to them that they were refusing to answer the questions I requested answered. Uh, there's the law, and then there's the spirit of the CCP, and that spirit is community co-operation. I want to suggest, and I can't go through all this, uh, that the city take thirty days pause. Any inspections are set up, go ahead and complete them. Those people have already signed them. Form a committee that would include people from the Water Department, City Council, Eagle, and perhaps a couple of people from the community and discuss this. Form uh an informational letter that could be sent out to people. I'm gonna, sorry, you slut my throat if you need to. And rewrite those letters. The, the spirit of cooperation with the community is not expressed in those letters. I'm not attacking anybody. It's just, we as a community can do better. And I think if we have community invite uh input on letters, we would do better. We're Americans. We do not like being threatened. And the threat to cut off somebody's water has severe consequences both for that residence and for the city of Marshall. And if we can avoid that, that would be good. I would also like to assure people that there is no document residents have to sign in connection with the cross-contamination containment project, none. When the inspectors come, they'll have a tablet. They will ask you to sign something, and this is the details that HydroCorp would not give me. But I have uh, Aaron told me and confirmed this in a second conversation. There is no obligation for anyone to sign anything. If you don't sign that tablet, the inspector will initial it. The report still goes in. And there's no consequence for not signing it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for giving me the extra time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am. Barry? Hi, Barry. I, I called on her.
All right. No, you're up. I'll sit here and watch.
Can I approach and give you copies of this map? Uh, my name is Karen Shear, and I live at one oh nine North Parkview Street. And the copies I provided is um, hopefully to help you understand what's going on. Uh, North Parkview is located behind the Honolulu House. It has two homes on it. And South Parkview is across Michigan Ave, and it also has two homes on it. The two homes on North Parkview, mine and my neighbor's at one one one, we have a trunk line, water line, that connects to a main on Mansion Street running through the backyards of three properties with no water easement and with structures built on top of it. The two houses on South Parkview have a trunk line that comes off Green Street and delivers water onto the street to the driveways of each of those two homes. My water line is failing. Over three weeks ago, I went from normal water pressure, approximately fifty-five P S I to thirteen P S I. And that was when it was last checked. I believe it's much lower now. Um, this happened within like a twenty-four hour period. Um, I have been communicating with Marguerite and Aaron, and we did have an onsite meeting to look at the issue. I'm aware that the homeowners are responsible for the water line repairs from the house to the main. However, no one from the city has been able to tell me how to remedy this because my water line runs under three structures and under structures with no water easement. It was determined by the city that my neighbor immediately to the north of me has a water line that forks off from mine, yet he has normal water pressure. But when my water is shut off at the main, his water goes off too. A neighbor shouldn't be able to fork off another neighbor's water line. I need to find out where this leak is, but no one's been able to help me um determine how to do that. I don't have jurisdiction over property owned by my neighbors. My water line runs off all the way from Mansion Street under my neighbor's property and structures, structures. So I, um, how am I supposed to fix the pipe if it's broken under someone else's property? If it's strictly on my property, then I need help to find it. I've requested the city line, um, for city water, like maps of the lines and the building permits. Yet I haven't been able to get those from the city. I am requesting that the city provide me a new water main at the end of my driveway, coming from Michigan Ave. Somewhere ninety percent of my water is going into the ground between Mansion Street and my house into the backyards. There is no evidence of a leak in any of our basements or outside in the yards. This situation could be a bigger accident waiting to happen if a sinkhole were to form under these homes and outside structures. I'm asking for your help. I would, I will soon be without water, and I need to find this leak. I'm also concerned about contaminants that may be entering my water. Without the ability to locate this leak, I need a new water line. And my neighbor who had to um leave town is a um professor of engineering, and he wanted to also present his letter, and there's copies here. What's that? Okay, thanks. He says the city of Battle Creek.
If I could ask you to wrap up, ma'am?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Very Wayne Adams again, six point two West Green Street. This is a, hopefully a teaching moment, and it's a matter of uh learning to practice what you preach. And there's been much discussion over the past few months about pedestrians being able to cross the circle into the fountain, and all sorts of ideas arose, including placing those little breakaway signs that say pedestrians have right-of-way state law right there in, on the asphalt of the circle. But last Saturday, when I was trying to cross into the fountain, uh, I was standing there, right, right by the little painted crosswalk uh by City Hall. And I was trying to cross, and a line of about seven or eight cars came along, and one of them in the middle was a Marshall police car. None of them stopped. I witnessed right before my eyes a Marshall cop violating state law. He was required to stop and let me pass. And this shows you that legalism doesn't make the world run right. It makes people who are actually considerate of each other. Laws against murder has not stopped murder, and so on. When, when I watch the Marshall cops with my own eyes violate the law that they are supposed to be enforcing, it's hard to give you guys any credibility. All right, I'll talk about stuff next time.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Sebringford, O'New Township. Our government has found CCP spyware in all the solar panels that is capable of throwing an EMP, that's an electromagnetic pulse. Also, the new computer systems that many towns have put in uh and the software that goes into their grids, which I'm pretty sure from going to all those meetings last year, we installed them, have the capability to throw an electromagnetic pulse. You can look that up. That means it will knock our grid down for many years. It is not repairable overnight. Within two weeks, thousands of people in our town will die. I'm just warning you right now, this whole solar panel thing and battery plant, I've told you a million times, is part of the overall three warfare program of the Chinese Communist Power Party. What you have enabled by getting cattle in here with your mieta. You have enabled the foreign enemy. I don't know. I witnessed all of this last year in your meetings. I wish you guys would wake up because you've already caused, you caused the death of so many, and you're gonna poison them with water and everything else. And this N D A, this is a non-disclosure agreement. Elected officials cannot, cannot sign those legally. I will find a prosecutor that will take care of that problem. There is a retiring prosecutor out there somewhere. We'll just keep filing charges on y'all until they fucking listen, okay? Whoops, excuse my language.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council this evening on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to uh council and manager communications. Uh, Member Skibby.
I'm nothing tonight. Thank you.
Member Gates?
Nothing currently. Thank you.
Member Hackworth?
Good night. Thank you.
Member Traver?
Yes, just one thing. I've um, it's been brought to my attention that there are um a few residents in town with golf carts, and they're interested in uh possibly looking at a, a golf cart ordinance. I don't believe we have one at all that exists. And if we did, I think there should be certain regulations in that ordinance to make it safe for driving on our streets at at night with seatbelts, lights, that kind of thing. I was just hoping that maybe we could bring that up and have it um as an action item for staff to look at and possibly bring to city council at a future work session to, to discuss.
I, I looked at this a little bit over the weekend, and, and one of the, the distinctions between golf carts and low-speed vehicles, golf carts are not street legal, low-speed vehicles are. So there's, they have the safety features and, and whatnot. So um, I know I, I personally um would be, would only be interested in allowing low-speed vehicles.
Yeah, I, I'd like to look at all that, and.
That would be part of, I guess, looking into it, sure.
And I don't know enough about it to know if there's, if you do a. And I don't know enough about it to know if there's, if you do a certain thing to your golf cart that qualifies as a low-speed vehicle. I, no. I wouldn't be against the golf carts. I've seen that in several other communities. So I think just, just bringing it further for more discussion, I would, I would love to see that.
That's off me. Thank you.
That would be, as long as there's consensus on city council, then we can go forward with that. Absolutely.
I feel like, I feel like a work session on it might be good. We can, we can get information and decide if it's something we are interested in pursuing or not.
Thank you.
Member Rana?
I believe Saturday is the pancake breakfast at airport. I do Teresa's job, but I think that's what it is on this Tuesday. It's Saturday, so I'll do Teresa's job because she's not here, so.
Uh, City Manager Pierre?
Uh, the only comment I have this evening is school does start on Wednesday, so just want folks to be aware of that. Obviously, traffic patterns will change come Wednesday morning and Wednesday afternoon. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll comment again that Motor Fest was a huge success. We have the home tour coming up in two weeks. And then we start, that kind of kicks off our, our fall agenda of events around the city. It's gonna be, it's gonna be busy. I did go by the middle school today, and I saw that they have poured the new pad for the new basketball courts that, that Ford sponsored. And so that's making great progress as the school year kicks off. I think that's it. So I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Support.
Motion support. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.